Hello and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan Submersible Tragedy. This video covers the testimony given at the U.S. Coast Guard's public hearing by Justin Jackson, a materials engineer at NASA. And I have to say, after covering the two previous testimonies, which were pretty lengthy and included presentations throughout, it was a nice sort of breather in a way to find that this one was more standard back and forth between the Coast Guard and the speaker. But it's not that I don't enjoy the presentation-focused testimonies, I hasten to add. I think it's just worked out well, the way the hearing's schedule was structured, so that we don't have periods of huge chunks of information overload. I think there has been a good balance, which stops, say, presentation-heavy testimonies being back-to-back-to-back and possibly bleeding into one another when trying to recollect something from one of them. Anyway, this one is also a lot shorter than usual, too, so I won't make it any longer than I need to right now. I will say, though, that I wasn't expecting this, and the following testimony with the representative from Boeing to be overly long, as their experiences working with Ocean Gate were fairly brief. Though there were some things I hope they covered, one being something we've heard and spoken about in past videos, that being Ocean Gate using the names of NASA and Boeing to name-drop and perhaps suggest a stronger connection and endorsement than was actually there. So, having said all that, let's get straight into the video. And just so you know, they did have some technical issues with this one, mainly with Mr. Jackson's camera at the start, and later on, there are also some moments of freezing. But none of this affected the audio at all, which is fine throughout, so no huge deal, really. As always, thank you all very much for clicking on this video. It is very much appreciated. Now, let's hear the testimony given by Justin Jackson, and I'll be back again at the end.
Mr. Jackson, Lieutenant Commander Williams is going to start the questioning today.
Good morning, Mr. Jackson. First, I'd like to thank you for being with us here today virtually. As I ask you questions, we will take breaks, and if you need a break, please let us know. All of my questions are related to your background and experiences with Ocean Gate. Before we begin, I will ask you to please refrain from using acronyms, with the exception of NASA. If you should use an acronym, I will stop you and ask you to explain what that acronym means. Today, I will be using an exhibit during my questioning. When I request it, you should be able to see it on your screen. If you cannot, please let us know. Could you please explain your background and work history?
Yes, so my background, I have a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering, along with a master's degree in mechanical engineering. My work history, I've been with NASA since 2006. I spent time at Armichio Assembly Facility during the Space Shuttle Program, working the external tank materials, non-metallic, metallic materials, non-conformant issues. I've also been stationed at the Marshall Space Flight Center since 2008, working a number of composite material-related programs, from our Ares program through our SLS program, as well as a number of technology development programs, launch vehicle propulsion-related, specifically composites at extremely low temperatures. My area of expertise is in the manufacturing of composite materials. I was responsible for setting up our in-house laboratory with automated equipment and been doing that job since roughly 2014. And I am currently in our, I'm the acting manager of our partnerships organization.
And did you have, or do you have, experience with submersibles prior, well, did you have experience with submersibles prior to working with Ocean Gate?
No.
Can you briefly describe your interactions with Ocean Gate?
They came to us looking for a facility that could manufacture a composite cylinder. So our interactions with them were mainly around the fabrication of their design.
Are you aware of who initiated the conversation between Ocean Gate and NASA? Was it NASA, or was NASA approached by Ocean Gate?
Yes, NASA was approached by Ocean Gate. I believe it was Bob Schuman, their COO, that originally reached out to us.
Lieutenant Steele, could you please bring up Exhibit 095, the NASA-Ocean Gate Agreement, page 1? Mr. Jackson, are you familiar with this document?
I am.
Can you explain to us what a reimbursable Space Act Agreement is?
Reimbursable Space Act Agreement, so Space Act Agreements is a process, it refers to a legal framework established under the National Aeronautics and Space Act of 1958, and it allows NASA to engage in partnerships with public and private entities. So it's our other transactional authority.
And what is the purpose of it?
The purpose of it is to give companies access to NASA facilities and expertise to, you know, work on mutually beneficial technologies.
And what was your understanding of the intent of this Space Act Agreement with Ocean Gate?
My understanding of the intent was they were to fabricate a thick composite cylinder, which had interest to us for exploration applications.
Lieutenant Steele, could you please move to page 14, Article 2? And this outlines the responsibilities for NASA and Ocean Gate for the Space Act Agreement. There are 14 responsibilities outlined for NASA. I'm just going to talk through a few of them. So notably, they include cylindrical test coupon and scale model builds, test coupon and scale model analysis, perform manufacturing layup, build, and cure of scaled models per drawings provided by Ocean Gate, conducting ultrasonic testing on manufactured scale models for testing, and there are more on this list, but those are just some I wanted to get on the record. When was this signed? And if not, we can turn to the page, but around, do you know what timeframe this was signed between NASA and Ocean Gate?
It was early 2020. You'd have to look at the page.
Could we scroll down to, I believe it's the last page? So just for the record, it looks like Ocean Gate signed January 30th, 2020, and NASA signed February 4th, 2020. Are you aware if NASA outlined, or did any of the items outlined in those areas of responsibilities that we just looked at on page 14?
We did not. We, the COVID pandemic occurred, and we weren't able to accomplish any of the fabrication. We provided remote consultation throughout the build of their one-third-scale article, but we did not do any manufacturing or testing of their cylinders.
Are you aware of who built their third-scale models?
I am.
Who was that?
I believe Electro Impact fabricated the articles.
Thank you. Lieutenant Steele, could you move to page 16, Article 4, Financial Obligations? Here it states that Ocean Gate would reimburse NASA an estimated cost of $148,874. Are you aware if NASA ever received any payments from Ocean Gate?
We received, it was roughly $40,000 for the remote consulting effort during the one-third-scale build. We returned close to $124,000 of that, that 148.
You mentioned that you gave some advice remotely. Can you go into that a little bit more? What exact, what exact advice that you were given, or that you gave Ocean Gate?
During their one-third-scale build, we provided a plan for them to, you know, try to fabricate that thick-walled cylinder. Our plan was mainly to, you know, lay down material, perform intermittent heated debulks with pressure, you know, to accomplish the thickness that they were looking for. So that was, you know, the extent of our, of our recommendations. It was all fabrication-related.
Did you, or are you aware if any other NASA employee provided advice to Ocean Gate related to non-destructive testing options for a five-inch-thick cylindrical hull of carbon fiber?
I believe during our conversations, one of our NDI experts, we had talked about using CT scanning for that.
Have you been involved in manufacturing thick pieces of carbon fiber, even unrelated to Ocean Gate?
Yes.
And how thick?
Personally, I've manufactured pieces up to two inches thick.
But nothing up to five inches thick?
No, not personally.
Have you been involved in projects where there was something constructed greater than two inches thick?
No, not personally.
Earlier, you mentioned CT. Can you just define that for the record, please?
Yeah, it's computed thermography. So it's an NDE technique. I'm over my skis on that. I'd have to consult with my, my NDE expert on the exact, you know, physics of it.
Did you, or are you aware if any other NASA employee provided advice to Ocean Gate related to carbon fiber material testing?
Yes, we had a team of engineers that was working the project. So there were, there were several of us that engaged with them.
And can you expand on that advice that was provided?
The nature of our advice at the time, if I recall correctly, we were, you know, making recommendations for coupon-level testing, because it's, you know, unusually thick laminate. So I don't recall the exact specifics of it, but it was test methods that would give them data for that thickness of a laminate.
And those coupon tests, would that, that sample be taken usually from a cutoff end after manufacturing?
You can do that. The advice early on was kind of a building block approach, so making samples before you actually made a cylinder. But traditionally, you can have what they call a tag-in, where you excise samples out of a piece of the as-manufactured article, and then you can perform testing on that for quality assurance purposes.
Did you, or are you aware if any other NASA employee provide to Ocean Gate advice related to multi-curing of a carbon fiber structure?
We had discussed it with them as a potential option. I don't recall the exact nature of those discussions.
Can you describe the purpose for a multi-curing process for a carbon fiber structure of thick, for the, of a thick carbon fiber structure?
Yes, so what would happen is the material becomes thick, which I believe you guys have seen some of the images, you'll start to see wrinkling or other non-desirable features. So the thought would be, you would build up a section that doesn't have those features, cure it, then come back and perform a secondary bond and continue that process till you reach your desired thickness.
So is it fair to say that the multi-curing process was to help reduce wrinkles in the final design?
I don't know the exact reason they did the, that would be my assumption.
Do you have experience with acoustic emission systems, specifically with carbon fiber?
We've used them in the past on other programs, but again, I would have to default to my, my NDE experts.
That concludes my questions.
Sir, Lieutenant Commander Emmons will now have some questions for you.
Good morning, Mr. Jackson. As a materials engineer at NASA, how do atmospheric pressures on vehicles in space and in deep water differ? And are there varying pressure differentials between the two environments?
That's, that's a big one. Do you mind unpackaging that, please?
Sure. Can you just kind of start with how are, how is a pressure vessel in space and in deep water differ, the pressures on each?
Okay, so a pressure vessel, you know, traditionally, the pressure's internal, so your, your volume is under tension. Launch vehicle component is typically compression-driven, so it's, it's usually loads within the direction of the fiber. The, the, the deep ocean vessel, you have external hydrostatic pressure, so you've got your, you know, your pressure uniformly distributed around the circumference of the vessel. So, I mean, that would be, it's, you know, a function of load application and boundary condition that are the main differences.
Should the design of spacecraft and submersibles be approached differently because of those differences?
I think the, the design should accommodate the loading environment, yes. I mean, they're, they're two different things.
So given the significant differences in pressure effects on spacecraft and submersibles, what rationale exists for NASA to lend its expertise to the development of submersibles?
Well, we weren't necessarily interested in the end application. We were interested in the thick-walled composite for our applications, albeit they would have been loaded differently. We were interested in potential habitats, radiation shielding, you know, a number of other applications, not necessarily, you know, hydrostatic submersible.
Were you or anyone at NASA involved in the procurement of the carbon fiber from Toray composites?
No, we did not procure the material.
So you mentioned remote consultation for the third-scale models. Did that include any analysis or recommendations to Ocean Gate on the carbon fiber that was utilized for the third-scale model build?
We didn't perform analysis. Early on in the discussions, they were looking for a material system for automated fiber placement, so they wanted something that was producible, had available data. So we made recommendations on several material systems, and they ultimately chose the Toray.
Has NASA ever been involved with building a passenger-carrying pressure vessel before?
Yes, I mean, we've been involved with crew capsules.
I mean, we were talking about the multi-caring process and the prevention of wrinkles. In your experience, when you have those wrinkles, how do you go about mitigating that for the next layers?
So our plan, our recommendation was what we called a heated debulk. So some of the engineers in the group had experience with laminates up to three, three-and-a-half inches thick, and what they had done was lay down three to five layers of material, place a vacuum bag on it, place it in an autoclave, and do a combined pressure-temperature consolidation step. In our experience, that would minimize those wrinkles, but those are, those are parameters to be worked out in the development.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. That's all I have, Mr. Jackson.
Sir, Lieutenant Commander Whalen has the next questions for you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. I just have one question. As we were discussing, as Lieutenant Commander Emmons was asking you about the manufacturing process or the heated debulking process to minimize wrinkles, should there still be wrinkles in the pressure vessel after conducting the pressurized heated debulk? As a materials expert, what would be your recommendation at that point with regards to those wrinkles?
I mean, if they're, if they're still in your part post-fabrication, you, you have to, you know, analyze their effects. I mean, I would, would assume that you would, you know, run some type of analysis to, you know, knock down your properties. You're not getting your stiffness that you originally wanted, so your buckling performance is going to change. You know, unfortunate to have wrinkles, but yeah, you'd have to assess their impact to your structure.
Would it be common practice to sand or grind those off to make the surface level for the next layer that will be put on?
No, that is, that is not common practice. So you're removing material, you're making a discontinuity. So typically, if you were to remove material in that fashion, you would come back and repair that with, you know, typically it's referred to as a scarf joint, where you sand your affected area away, you place plies back in to pick up that load path. That's, that's common practice.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, when NASA was originally approached by Ocean Gate, did Ocean Gate provide the plan for their operations? And specifically, I mean, did they talk about deep-sea exploration with crew members?
Yes, from my recollection, some of the original plan was, it was actually mineral exploration with some of the early discussions. They, you know, they also mentioned, I guess, you know, what they were doing, you know, exploring shipwrecks and other deep-sea features.
During discussions with Ocean Gate, did they make their intentions for the testing of the hull they were performing clear to NASA? Like their plans for NDT or any type of performance testing?
No, once, once COVID hit and we weren't doing the work in our facilities, they, they went off, you know, and they, they found other commercial partners. We weren't really apprised of their overall plans. I was aware that they were going to do proof testing in the deep-sea facility, but past that, we weren't apprised of, of any test plans.
If Ocean Gate had been approved to construct a, a hull at NASA facilities, would, would that be like free of charge under the program you had in place?
No, the reimbursable Space Act, the commercial partner is responsible for paying for all of our services, so that includes labor, consumables, facility charges. So no, they would have, they would have had to pay for that.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to go to the National Transportation Safety Board at this time for questions.
Good morning, Mr. Jackson. I noticed on the attachment or the exhibit we had up earlier, it mentioned UT testing. Had you built this hull, is that something NASA would have insisted on, or some other sort of NDT?
Yes, any, any composite material we build, we do non-destructive evaluation as a standard practice.
So had the, had the hull come up with, or the UT testing revealed unacceptable anomalies, what happens then? Do you still turn the hull over to the client and with a report, or do we start from scratch?
That's a tough one. That's a, that's a hypothetical that we haven't had to experience yet. I, I, if deemed unsafe, we would never turn it over, but that's something we didn't, we didn't experience or, or conduct.
Did Ocean Gate discuss what would be acceptable as far as in UT testing? A certain percentage of velocity or voids or?
I, I don't recall their specific, you know, void or defect tolerances. I don't know what that was or if they had that.
Did you advise Ocean Gate on or recommend a coating for the outside of the hull?
No, we did not.
And lastly, I heard you say you didn't procure the carbon fiber. What, it was, was it not delivered to your facility?
Yes, the, the 300 pounds for the one-scale models were delivered in Feb, or March of 2020. They sat in one of our cold storage units until Ocean Gate, we returned them. So they, they came in, sat in our freezer, and they were ultimately returned due to our inability to, to perform work on that task.
Thank you for your time today, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Jackson, one follow-up on that question. If NASA was pursuing a similar project for a pressure hull, a new design, what type of models would, would you build for that? And I mean like a third-scale, a two-thirds-scale, and a full-scale? Or is it, would that be typically part of that process?
So, so I understand the question. Hypothetically, we were to build a structure, what would we do to test it?
Well, I'm curious, when you build a new pressure hull of carbon fiber for even space applications, what type of modeling do you build first, or do you?
Yeah, I got you. We, we typically follow the traditional aerospace building block approach. We start at subscale coupons, we work our way up to representative sections, all the way up through, typically, we'll build a full-scale article that goes through cyclic as well as destructive testing before we actually build a, an operational unit. The closest thing I can relate this to is, is pressure vessels, which we have a good bit of experience with, and we typically start at a subscale, work our way up, and then we'll have a fleet leader, which is typically tested through failure, so that way we understand our, our failure modes, we're able to write margin to that, and then we'll go off, you know, tightly controlled manufacturing processes and repeat that process for an actual flight structure.
Sir, for a carbon fiber structure that's five inches thick, can you, are you aware of any challenges for non-destructive testing that that presents?
Yeah, the, the thickness is going to be a challenge. You'd probably, I think a CT scan would get through it. The problem you're going to run into is having an adequate standard. So when you perform NDE on, on a composite or whatever, you get back a signal, you don't necessarily know what you're looking for. So you typically build standards with known defects, so you have some reference point from which to measure.
If you were to use CT on a five-inch-thick carbon structure, would, would it be difficult to find smaller defects in the material?
I would have to, you know, default back to our NDE folks, but typically, you've got a, a minimum detectable, and so you determine that threshold, you know, early on in your program with what's my min detectable, and typically, you assume that that flaw exists, and you account for that in your analyses.
Thank you, sir. Ed, are there any questions, further questions from the board at this time? Lieutenant Commander Williams?
Mr. Jackson, in all the designs you have been involved with, do you understand what the life cycle of all of those designs or constructed items are?
We typically determine that through test. So yes, for a pressure vessel, we cycle them to failure. For a structure, we test it through failure. Whatever our expected, you know, load spectrum's going to look like over the life of the component, we typically test.
And when you conduct those tests, do you feed that back into your analysis and reevaluate?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Jackson, I'd like to take a five-minute recess, just to see if we have any additional questions for you, sir? And so then reconvene at 9:20 our time. All right, the hearing is now back in session. Mr. Jackson, I'm now going to pass the questions to Ocean Gate Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Just two questions for you. At the time when the Space Act Agreement was signed that we saw earlier, was it NASA's intention to perform the services that were listed in the agreement?
At the time of signature, it was.
And COVID interrupted those plans, is that right?
That is correct.
And you mentioned coupon testing. Just for clarification, we've heard testimony earlier on referring to witness panels and examination of witness panel material. Is that the same thing, or is that different?
It's potentially, a coupon refers to a, a small subsection of your structure. So that can either come out of your full-scale structure, or you can build smaller representative samples of the same material and manufacturing process.
And is that the same as a witness panel, or is that something different?
In aerospace, a witness panel is typically a panel that is built the same way, that goes through the same exact processes, and then you have something you can test that is close to your as-built structure. A tag-in physically comes out of the as-built structure on the, the piece of discarded material that was machined, and then material, we call them allowable's coupons or development coupons, those are built separately and evaluated.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Jackson, the Titan Hull began operations in 2021, doing Titanic expeditions. Do you know if there was any contact, either formal or informal, between NASA and Ocean Gate after, or starting in 2021 timeframe?
Yeah, we, I had had some conversations with, with Bob Schuman. He had sent us a note telling us that they were doing qualification dives, and then we also had some exchanges. They wanted to do another press release that we ultimately couldn't come to resolution on the details of, and then conversations ended shortly thereafter.
Do you remember what timeframe that was, sir?
I, it was when they were doing their first dive. I don't, I don't know the exact dates.
Would that be the first dive to the Titanic site, or test dives in other locations?
I, I don't know the specific, I don't, I don't know the exact dates. I'd have to go back and look at my, my emails.
Sir, did NASA ever become aware that Ocean Gate used NASA in any type of media release?
The, the media releases that we saw were, were approved through our, through our media department.
Do you remember why NASA? Do you remember why NASA, why you refused Ocean Gate's request to use NASA in the media release that you referenced?
It was, the, the language they were using was getting too close to us endorsing. So it was a, our folks had some heartburn with the endorsement level of it.
Did you clarify that, that NASA should not be used at all in Ocean Gate media?
I, I don't recall that.
Are there any?
Mr. Newbar, can I follow up on that?
Yes.
In the, is that right, Mr. Jackson, that you mentioned that the media releases that were made were approved through NASA's media department?
That's my understanding. I didn't, I didn't work those. I just checked them for technical accuracy.
Thank you.
At this time, are there any further questions for Mr. Jackson from the board? Mr. Jackson, is there anything that we have not asked you that you think would be relevant to this investigation?
No, I, I don't believe so. I think you guys have been quite thorough.
Thank you for your time again, Mr. Jackson. You are now released from this, as a witness to this Marine Board investigation.
So that concludes the testimony of Justin Jackson. And while this one might have not been the longest, it still produced some interesting insights into the relationship between Ocean Gate and NASA, including the agreement that was signed between the two, with the responsibilities that would have been performed if not for the 2020 pandemic, as well as how much NASA's involvement would cost Ocean Gate financially, including the fee that was paid for the remote consultation that did take place. Speaking of cost, the total amount for NASA's involvement, while maybe not for others in the industry perhaps, seemed a substantial amount for Ocean Gate, though after looking it up online, and it's even included on the basic Ocean Gate timeline page on Wikipedia, it stated that the development and manufacturing would be funded by a new round of investments. The GeekWire article that is cited is a brief, interesting read, and I will link it in the description if you'd like to read it in full. I will read a section here, as I myself do find it interesting to go back to these documented moments from Ocean Gate's past, before most of the world even knew the company's name. Ocean Gate says it has raised 18.1 million in new investment, laying the financial groundwork for an expansion of its fleet of deep sea submersibles and setting the stage for dives to the Titanic shipwreck in 2021. Stockton Rush declined to identify the investors, other than to say it was 100% insiders. This is shaping up as a rebuilding year for the nearly 11-year-old venture based in Everett. The main task on the agenda is to build two new submersibles capable of diving as deep as 6,000 meters. Ocean Gate will take advantage of lessons learned during the construction of its carbon-hulled Titan submersible, which was originally built for Titanic journeys. Rush said that tests were conducted at the Deep Ocean Test Facility, revealed that Titan's hull showed signs of cyclic fatigue. As a result, the hull's depth rating was reduced to 3,000 meters. "Not enough to get to Titanic," Rush said. He said that mission specialists who have paid more than $100,000 each to participate in the Titanic expeditions were generally supportive but disappointed by the delay. Completing the latest funding round will open the way for proceeding with Titanic trips and other expeditions on Ocean Gate's agenda. Again, there will be a link to that article in the description. Before we end this video, I of course do want to mention that we heard Mr. Jackson speak about how Ocean Gate used NASA's name in their various media, to a point where it basically sounded as if NASA endorsed what they were doing, which eventually led to conversations that would both address and correct this. The topic of sanding being performed to remove imperfections was also covered. And of course, it was no surprise to hear that this isn't common practice. As far as name dropping is concerned, I suspect we may hear similar things in the next testimony with the representative from Boeing. That testimony is also a short one, by the way, and I'll be working on that the same day that this one is uploaded, so do keep an eye out for that one, too. And after that, there are just five testimonies left to cover, one of which is an ex-Ocean Gate employee, which was featured in Netflix's documentary. And either side of that one, there are two testimonies given by representatives of the U.S. Coast Guard from various sectors. So hearing that side of things will be new to this coverage and promises to be an interesting watch. Anyway, so much for making this a short video. If you have made it this far, I thank you all very much for watching. It really is appreciated and I will be back again soon with the next video. So until then, bye for now.